The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. B, Public Comment on Closed Session Items. Before going into closed session, the Board is available for public comment on closed-session agenda items. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on closed-session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed-session agenda items.
Thank you. Seeing that there are none, the Board will now adjourn into closed session. My name is Eve Reiser, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Ashley Heil. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Si, muy buenas tardes a todos. Para acceder a la interpretación simultánea a español, en un momento aparecerá en la parte baja de la pantalla en Zoom el símbolo del globoterráqueo. Por favor, haga clic ahí y escoge español, y después Done o Listo. Si está usando una tableta o teléfono celular en Zoom, busque tres puntitos y la palabra more, o más, haga clic ahí, y bajo Language Interpretation, o Interpretación de Idioma, elige español, y finalmente pulse End Done, o Listo. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Veda Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member Official Leader?
Here.
Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Trustee Martin?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Quorum, present. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. As we begin our meeting this evening, we would like to begin by sharing both our Napa Valley Unified School District's vision and mission statements. Our vision: Our graduates are confident, compassionate, and adaptable adults who are well-prepared for life and become inspiring advocates for themselves and their community. And the USD's mission: Our mission is to prepare each student for a successful future by delivering rigorous and relevant learning experiences that develop their literacy and career-ready skills, cultivate their interests, and build resilience, compassion, and confidence. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Hart, do you have a report on closed-session items?
I do. Item D5, with respect to items related to anticipated litigation, Government Code, Section 54956.9, the Board approved a settlement agreement to resolve a student's educational claims.
Thank you. E2, Flag Salute. One of our Students of the Month from Napa High School has graciously agreed to lead us in a flag salute. Would Jack Moore please come on up and help us out?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much, Jack. E3, Announcement. This meeting is live-streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. E4, Approval of Agenda. I would like to propose one amendment, which is that we move item J3A to before I the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve as a nominee.
Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. We have E5, Approval of the Minutes, for E5A, August 7, 2025.
Move to approve, second.
A first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. And E5B for August 21, 2025. I will be abstaining from that, and want to just take a moment to thank Vice President Chu for presiding in my absence. I was battling COVID. So, E5B?
Move to approve, second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I'll also abstain.
So, and I abstain as well. Thank you very much. So, three out of five is what we have. Okay. Well, if it's not good, then there's nothing we can do about it right now.
We'll bring it back.
Oh, we would bring it back to the next?
Yeah. Okay, let me think about that.
Okay. If three trustees is enough to approve the minutes from that? Okay. E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance outside of the boardroom members of attendance here?
I do not see any of our special guests to see.
Thank you so much. F, Recognition of Students of the Month. We'll start with American Canyon High School. Will Assistant Principal Gore please present the Students of the Month?
Madam President, Trustee Reiser, Madam Vice President, Trustee Chu, Dr. Masetti, members of the Board, thank you so much for giving us this great privilege of presenting our Students of the Month. For the month of September, the Student of the Month is Sophia Pereda. Sophia embodies the graduate portrait characteristics of ready-for-adulthood and the reward- and career-ready scholar. Her teacher, Mr. Marsden, nominated Sophia. He recognizes that Sophia has started her own business through the Kids Commerce Program while in high school. In addition, she's the president of the Student Business Union and incubator for students' created businesses. She always brings a positive energy and eagerness to learn in economics class. She's preparing herself well for life after high school by developing her entrepreneurial abilities. We enjoy seeing Sophia take on leadership roles on campus, on leadership roles, and performing in the marching band and orchestra. Congratulations, Sophia. And Sophia, would you like to give us a few words?
My name is Sophia Pereda, and I'm a senior here at American Canyon High School. I'd like to begin by sincerely thanking the NVUSD Board and Superintendent Masetti for recognizing me as the Student of the Month. It's an honor I am truly grateful for. Over the past four years, I've been fortunate enough to explore so many opportunities that have helped shape me and who I am. Whether it's performing in orchestra and marching band, planning events like prom and homecoming, or diving into business and economics projects, I've grown not only as a student but as a leader. I'm now serving as senior class treasurer in my fourth year of leadership. I've also held leadership roles in our competitive instrumental music ensembles like marching band and winter percussion. I've been actively involved in our Business CTE program as well, where I've built valuable skills related to my future and meaningful friendships. This past spring, I had the chance to launch my own gluten-free pop-up bakery, the Open Oven, through the Kids Commerce Program with the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. After being diagnosed with celiac disease over three years ago, I knew I wanted to turn that challenge into something positive. At my first pop-up, a mother and her daughter, who was also a celiac, she told me it was the first time they'd seen so many safe dessert options. That moment reminded me why I started my business. Food carries so many memories, and for people with dietary restrictions, those memories can feel so out of reach, and I'm proud to help make space for them. I'm incredibly honored to be nominated by my economics teacher, Mr. Marsden. Within our graduate profile, he highlighted me for career readiness. After graduation, I plan to study business with a focus on marketing. I may not know exactly where that path will lead, but I know I want to keep doing work that follows in my creative and altruistic manner. To my teachers, mentors, and the NVUSD community, thank you for encouraging me every step of the way. And to my friends and family, thank you for your constant support and belief in me. I wouldn't be here without you. Thank you.
Really makes me wonder what I was doing at that age.
Okay. Oh, wow.
Our Student of the Month for the month of October is Ms. Claire Miles. I have words to say from her teacher, but her teacher is here, so if you allow Ms. Gonzalez to give the speech herself about her student, I will be grateful for that.
Thank you, Board, for this opportunity. My name is Alma Gonzalez, and I teach math, and I'm the Academic Decathlon Coach at American Canyon High School. I have nominated Claire as the Student of the Month because I believe she's an adaptive, innovative, and collaborative leader. Claire has done a great job in the Academic Decathlon, leading by example, holding others accountable, and willing to go above and beyond when needed. Claire has become the highest-scoring decathlete on my team and earned a perfect score in the speech portion of the competition. Claire has also helped pioneer student-led mindfulness days at the Wellness Center. She's an active member on many clubs on campus, including the Environmental Club and the GSA Club. Claire is a thoughtful, caring, supportive, eloquent, and driven. Congratulations to Claire.
I'd like to start by thanking the school board for this honorable recognition, and thanking Superintendent Masetti in particular, as I'm so grateful to be receiving this honor. American Canyon High School, in just four years, has lent me the platform to explore avenues I never thought before possible. This year, I'm the president of the Academic Decathlon, which has satiated, to some extent, my hunger for knowledge outside of what is taught in class, and allowed me to share my passion for education with others. I'm also the founder and president of the Mindfulness Club, a club dedicated to sharing with peers the importance and utility of mindfulness practice, as well as the vice president for our GSA, an integral pillar of student advocacy and community on campus. Through ACHS, I have seized opportunities to amass countless hours of volunteering, participate in art exhibits, perform independent musical performances and poetry recitations, to play and lose on a badminton court, and most importantly, consistently strive to learn more, study harder, and adapt through challenges with integrity. I believe these experiences have set me up for a life and career dedicated to my passion of environmental studies, but also for a tendency towards a lifelong pursuit of knowledge and personal growth. The Graduate Portrait lists adaptive learning as one of the tenets to success, a capability I have worked hard to preserve among modern pressures that demand efficiency and automation. In our rapidly changing political and educational landscapes, the ability for one to be open-minded, to understand failure as a part of the learning process, and to view weaknesses as opportunities to learn and to ask questions is not only a skill of intelligence but of survival. The basis for this skill does not lie within the desire to get a certain letter on a transcript, but rather a persisting integrity that fuels a craving for an expanded worldview, a quench for curiosity, and an understanding of learning for a learning sake which fills my school days with both purpose and enthusiasm. To end, I'd like to thank my Academic Decathlon Coach, my teacher, and my mentor, Ms. Gonzalez, for nominating me for such a recognition and for encouraging me to exceed expectations. And most importantly, I'd like to thank my family, not only for instilling me with a passion for education, but also for the endless support they have provided me to achieve these goals. Thank you.
Now, will Principal Ainsworth please present the Students of the Month from Napa High School?
So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce two more incredible students from Napa High. First up, we have Jack Moore. Jack is a walking piece of excellence in everything he does. From his grades of a GPA of 4.38, he's a leadership student. In his senior year, he decided the only prep class he would take would be leadership and everything else is AP in college. More importantly, he's a person that's driven by character, integrity, and humility, which are just incredible attributes for someone as successful as him. He has two incredible parents that are huge advocates and supporters of Napa High. He's on our cross-country team and finished 19th in North Coast, did I write it right? In the toughest division of cross-country in the North Coast section, finished 19th. It is a true privilege to introduce our Napa High superfan who just came straight from big game volleyball, which is a beach theme tonight, so. Jack, come on up.
My name is Jack Moore, and it is my extreme honor to be standing before you tonight. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Masetti and the members of the Board for providing the structure that has led to my student's success. Thanks also to Principal Ainsworth, the entire Napa High community, and to my parents and my sister for their support as well. My journey to receiving this honor began all the way back in elementary school at Plublo Vista, where I was enrolled in the first dual-emersion class as in kindergarten. Fast forward 12 years, and I am now a proud member of Napa High's ESAP program. With help from my favorite teacher, Ms. Colorado, I passed the AP Spanish test with a perfect score of five. I am now looking forward to obtaining my syllabi literacy in this, my senior year, something I think will prove very useful in my ventures to hopefully travel the world, the globe. Academics aren't my only focus, however, especially at Napa High. I also run for our school's cross-country and track teams and serve as a captain on both of them. With student leadership, I participate in spirit weeks, cheer at sporting events, which is why I'm dressed how I am today, and I also volunteer for a number of worthy causes. One of my absolute favorites, though, is the Better Together Ball, which is a prom-like community dance party for kids with disabilities, something I've attended since sophomore year and plan to attend again this year. I would also like to give Ms. Lawton a shout-out for giving me the opportunity to work as a TA with the Valdez Math Program this summer. Thanks also to my amazing math teachers at Napa High for inspiring me to, wow, for inspiring me to pursue a career in aerospace engineering and to build and fly planes. In conclusion, thank you again to everyone who has supported me along this journey. Por ustedes, mis sueños están convirtiendo en realidad.
I actually knew this moment would come the first time I met her. I met her freshman year, I think, the second or third day of school. She was yanked out of the bathroom by Ms. Whipple, who drug her into the office because she was singing in the bathroom, and she thought it was the radio, and was so moved by her voice. And if you know Ms. Whipple, it wasn't really an option. It was, you will put her in choir. She entered as a newcomer, English learner, Level 1, and as she's getting scheduled into this class, I went down to Mr. Cooper's room and said, "Mr. Cooper, you have a student coming to your class, doesn't speak any English, but she's got an incredible voice." And Maya, of all people, was right there saying, "I can help." And by the time the next period rolled around, Andrea entered class with friends and a community of people. And by the midpoint of her junior year, she exited ELD. She carries a 3.98, or 3.83, sorry, GPA. She's American Idol, or Napa Valley Idol winner. She sung at the Lincoln Center in New York City, and this summer released her first solo album. It's a privilege to introduce Andrea Barrera.
Hello, and good evening to everyone. First of all, I would really like to thank Mrs. Mr. Ainsworth for nominating me. It's such an honor for me to be here tonight. My name is Andrea Barrera, and I'm going to be sharing with you a little bit more about me. I am originally from El Salvador, and I moved to California almost four years ago with my little brother and my mother. When I first got here, I was really scared that language was going to be really challenging for me to learn and that I wasn't going to be able to make connections with people because of that. But as soon as I entered the ELD program, that changed because I knew that there were kids just like me who were so into learning, and they were giving their best every day to try and learn, and that gave me hope. And I would like to thank my ELD teachers because with their hope, I was able to be reclassified as English professional within two years of being in the ELD program, and I'm really happy for that, and I'm really grateful as well. Napa High has given me such beautiful experiences and memories, and one of them was entering the choir program, which, as Mr. Ainsworth said, it was because I was singing in the bathrooms, and my P.E. teacher heard me. And it's thanks to her that I've been able to be in choir all four years. I've been part of trouble choir, concert choir, I've been part of chamber choir three years, and it's my second year being in vocal music worship. I'm also section leader of my soprano section in chamber choir. And something else that I would like to share with you is that, well, Mr. Ainsworth already said it, but I've released my first album last summer, and it has four original songs, and it's available everywhere where you can hear it. And also, I'm going to be singing a blue note on the 23rd, 25th, and the 28th, if you want to come by and listen to my music. Thank you so much. Let me think about that. I'll sing one of my original songs. This is a song I wrote when I was 13 years old. It's called "El Cuento," and it's a song about having been able to not lose our inner child and being creative everywhere and always, and like, don't let people tell you that because you're old, you cannot be creative, that's a lie. So, it's, yeah.
Congratulations to our Napa High Students of the Month, Jack and Andrea. And I will add that I did have the opportunity to attend Andrea's album release event that happened downtown at The Yard, and the poise and grace in combination with that talent was evident as she was interviewed on live radio and then performed several songs, and I just am thrilled that we had a chance to get a taste of that today in the boardroom. Thank you so much. Oh, yeah. And so, the Students of the Month and your families, if you would like to take a moment to exit, you certainly are welcome to stay and listen in and join us for the rest of the meeting, but if you want to exit now, now's a good time. So, now I will ask for G, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Trustee Hart, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Thank you. Before I open the floor to public comment on non-agenda items, I'd like to explain the rules that govern this area of the meeting. The Brown Act, open meeting laws under which we are required to operate prohibit board members from discussing items that you may bring up that are not on our current agenda. The reason for this legal restriction is to make sure that anyone who has an interest in a particular district business matter knows through the Board's posted agenda when we will be discussing it as a Board, so that they can also be present and provide input on the item. We're very happy to have you here to let us know your concerns. Please know that while we cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, we are listening to your voices, and we expect and know that our staff will follow up with us on issues raised by members of our community. Relevant to the remainder of the Board agenda, please understand that the Board listens and considers public comment on the agendized items during our meeting. However, public comment is not intended to be a two-way dialogue between the public and Board members and/or staff, and therefore, trustees will not respond to individual comments. This is in accordance with our meeting procedures. We invite members of the public to provide input via public comment per our Board Bylaw 9323 regarding meeting agenda items. We welcome and appreciate the public's engagement and input. In sum, please know that your voice matters and makes a difference. Your public comment on agendized items might be referenced during our discussions and will be considered as we make decisions regarding agendized items. So, we don't have any public comment? Okay. All right. So, Ms. Green, is there any public comment on non-agenda items online?
There is no public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to H Reports. H1, Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Student Board Trustee Official Leader, would you like to start us off?
I can. One more congratulations.
One more congratulations to all the Students of the Month. Since our last conversation, a lot has happened. On August 26th, I attended the first meeting of the Leadership Committee at Mentis. We spoke on our upcoming retreat, which will take tomorrow, September 12th, and the Mental Health Festival, which is still in the works, but I'll have an update later. On September 1st, I was selected to be a part of the VHS Site Council, the Vintage High School Site Council. I'm hoping to bring what I learned here and what I see on Vintage to bring what I can take. Later, on September 8th, I was selected to be on the Student Advisory Council here at the district. I will be accompanied with three other Vintage High School students, so it's great to be a part of that. Our first meeting is on the 17th in the morning, so it'll be great to see that. On campus, Vintage just had their Club Rush Day. It was great to see all of the freshmen settling in, as well as the sophomores and juniors finding clubs that support their interests. Additionally, New Tech just also had their Club Rush Day. And let me see. An American Canyon Homecoming will be, I believe, next week or the week after that. I hope to see a few there and hear from that. Zoe Greason, who is the student rep alternate, was just selected to be on the New Tech Site Council as the secretary. I cannot imagine how she's going to balance that all, but I know she's going to do that amazingly. And then finally, New Tech has also been implementing different Socratic seminars that will align with the graduate portrait by providing internship opportunities and more outside opportunities as well. And that's all I have to conclude. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Water?
Thank you, President, Madam President. Okay, well, let's see. On the 26th of August, I went to back-to-school night at Silverado Middle School and observed teachers welcoming parents and explaining, you know, what was going to happen in the classroom. And everyone who attended was very happy at the repairs that had been made at the school over the summer. On the 27th of August, I, via Zoom, I watched a student of mine, Yessenia Garcia Cifuentes, and she just got her PhD at Emory in, let's see, neurobiology. And, right, and very, very, very abstruse. I was thrilled to see she, you know, she talked about her project and everybody asked questions, but I was really happy to see how she went there, went from Napa High to Vassar on a full scholarship. And I was just happy to see how Emory had welcomed her and when she accepted her doctorate, her parents were there. She thanked them, she thanked the school for appreciating diversity and Mexican immigrant excellence. And in case her name sounds familiar, she is the first cousin of Miroslava. Cifuentes is off at Yale, who was our alternate board member. And I asked, how was Miroslava doing? And she said she's complaining about the food. Apparently, at New Haven, there are no fresh fruits or vegetables. Everything is frozen. So yay for California. On the 2nd, I went to a Napa County Office of Education meeting. On the 3rd, I went to Pueblo Vista Elementary School, West Park Elementary School, McPherson Elementary School for the ribbon cutting. On the 4th, same thing, Visi Elementary School, Phillips Elementary School, Shear Elementary School. And then on the 5th, I went to Silverado Middle School and I saw most of you at all of these. And it was just a wonderful week, lots of happiness and thank you to the voters who approved Measure B. And on the 10th and 11th, I ran around to Napa High School, Vintage High School, Valle Oak, New Tech High School, American Canyon High School with posters for Voter Registration Day, which is next Tuesday. And students in the audience, if you are 16 or 17, you can preregister to vote and you can, there's a QR code. You can go to the Secretary of State's office, that is sos.ca.gov, and you can register there as well. And I did lots of reading. I saw a really interesting article in the New York Times about a food program similar to ours. You know, lots of, we're practically farm to table. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Trustee Martin?
I was reading the Napa Valley Register the other day and it was really cool to read that the Napa Grizzlies at Napa High School won their first football game between St. Patrick, St. Vincent, 31 to 6. The second game, they lost to Annalee, but they put up a good fight. The score was 35 to 56. Their next game is at Hercules on September 19th and I wish them a lot of luck. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Hart?
All right. So I wasn't here at our last board meeting, so I'm going to back up a little bit here to the beginning of the school year. We do a really nice, Dr. Musetti and the staff here does a really nice welcome back for all the employees out here in front of the district building at the beginning of the year and in American Canyon as well. So I was able to attend the Napa version of that and it was great to see everybody. Everyone was so excited and happy to be there and to be starting back with the new year. So that was really awesome. On the 12th of August, I attended orientation and welcome to Unidos Middle School for my last NVUSD child, who has now moved on to middle school. So that was exciting and kind of sad at the same time, so it was a good one. On the 14th, I actually was back at Unidos and I met with their new principal, Carolie Dean Cruz, who was very impressive. And I'm super excited to see what she brings to Unidos, to our DLI program, and to our entire district because she's on fire and she was a great, great pick for that role. On the 19th, I had the privilege of visiting five of our schools to welcome them back to the school year. Northwood, Pueblo Vista, West Park, Willow, and Valle Oak. Back-to-school night at Unidos on the 26th. The 28th, we had our Board Advisory Policy Committee meeting. On the 30th, I attended, along with a couple of my fellow trustees, the Rally for Their Rights in support of our local LGBTQIA+ community. On the 3rd, along with many other trustees and folks from the district, I attended the Pueblo Vista Facilities Improvement Showcase, highlighting the improvements made to the campus utilizing the Measure B funds. It was very exciting to see our students enjoying the results of the hard work that it took to get that bond passed. Little-known fact, I spent a little bit of time at that campus when I was a kid. They had special programs and that was where one was located. And I'm 90% certain the paint on the walls was the same as it was in 1984. So props on getting that cleaned up. It looks beautiful. All the campuses look great. So thank you to everyone who had a part in that. Our students really deserve it. And lastly, I want to share a cute little anecdote. You know how on Facebook, because I'm old, I still use Facebook, it comes up with a history of like, oh, this many years ago, you did this or that, and different memories come up. On August 17th of 2017, so this is the pre-Musetti era, I made a post and it's a picture of a handwriting and it says, okay, Napa Valley Unified Schools, it's 2017, can we please get all this back-to-school paperwork online? My hand is starting to cramp. At the time, I was filling out three packets, if you guys remember what we used to get, three packets like that with all the details that you had to handwrite the same thing over and over again every year. So I want to thank the new administration here for putting that online. I know it's been a big win for the district overall and it's been a big relief for those of us that have multiple children in the district. So thank you very much. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Chu?
Well, I remember those packets also. And I also use Facebook because I was able to watch all of the ribbon cuttings on Facebook live, which was great because I was not able to get to Napa on those days. And since the last meeting, I attended online the NCOE Board of Education meeting. I hear Trustee Water was also online, or perhaps you were there in person?
I was there in person.
And then on September 5th, I went to the first home game of the American Canyon High School Football varsity game. And on September 9th, I, along with Trustee Riser, attended the NVUSD Inclusive and Welcoming Schools Steering Committee meeting. And we discussed how NVUSD can continue to make our schools inclusive and welcoming despite whatever is happening at the federal level. Yesterday, I attended the Finance Committee meeting, which the next meeting will have the minutes. And also attended the Arbinger Group Implementation Session via Zoom, also with Trustee Riser. I'm very grateful for the ability to continue professional development in our board role. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. On August 28th, I was very happy to make a number of school visits, quick school visits to connect with the site leaders, thank them for their hard work, and, you know, hear about the kickoff of their school year. So I want to thank Principal Mountner at Snow Elementary School, Principal Jones at Phillips Elementary School, Principal Ward at Alta Heights Elementary School, Principal Osborne at Browns Valley Elementary School, and Principal Coro at Napa Valley Language Academy for their warm welcome and just the chance to reconnect and continue to foster relationships with, you know, our wonderful site leaders across the district. So that was a treat. I, as Trustee Hart mentioned, attended the Rally for Their Rights on September 5th. That was a collaboration of Napa Valley Pride, LGBTQ Connection, and also an organization that I volunteer with, Free Mom Hugs was there tabling. Just a really great affirmation of the inclusive and welcoming community efforts that are happening within Napa Valley. And then that was a nice, also continuation of that effort to, as Trustee Chu said, to be part of the Inclusive and Welcoming Schools Steering Committee that our organization has convened and, again, renewing and continuing to make progress with our commitment to make sure that every student in our organization knows that they are safe and welcome and included. On September 5th, I attended two of the Measure B celebrations of facilities improvements at Browns Valley Elementary School and also at Silverado Middle School. Just really joyful celebrations of the long overdue and much deserved facilities improvements. And I will add my thanks to the voters for passing Measure B. On September 10th, I had our regular board president, superintendent check-in ahead of every board meeting. We have a meeting. That was followed right closely by the Board Advisory Finance Committee that I attended with Trustee Chu. And then again, later on in the afternoon, the Arbinger Implementation, sort of leadership governance implementation meeting that we had. And again, I'll echo Trustee Chu's sentiment that our ability to continue to develop as professionals in our governance role is really appreciated and important. Okay, so that brings us to Superintendent, oh no, I'm sorry, Board Representative Reports, H2A, Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
So we have our first meeting scheduled for Monday for this school year, so I'll be looking forward to reporting on that at our following board meeting.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Hart. H2B, the City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives?
We have not met.
And H2C, the City of Napa Liaison Representatives?
We have not met.
Okay, thank you. H3, Superintendent and Executive Staff?
Great. Thank you, President Riser. Good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff, and community. I'm pleased to share a few positive highlights from the launch of the 2025-2026 school year. It's hard to believe we're approaching a month in. So I'll start out with school visits. In the first weeks of school, I have had the privilege of visiting all 26 NVUSD schools. I have the adult school left, so I'm excited to visit with them soon. It's always inspiring to see the energy and enthusiasm of our students and staff as a new year begins. Each campus demonstrated focus, readiness, and an excitement for the learning ahead. I heard repeatedly from administrators, teachers, and support staff on the campuses that it's felt like the smoothest start of the past few years, even at the sites where we had large-scale summer construction. So that was great to hear. Many of the trustees alluded to the Measure B ribbon cuttings, our tour, we called it the Measure B Celebration Tour. If you've been following us on social media, you know that this past week, we celebrated the completion of eight Measure B modernization projects at schools across Napa. The ribbon cuttings were an absolute huge success with students, family, staff, and community members gathering to see and celebrate the dramatic improvements to these eight campuses in Phase 1 of Measure B. These projects represent our shared commitment to safe, modern, and inspiring learning environments for all students. Thank you again to our Napa community for supporting Measure B and making these transformations possible. At the end of my report, I will share a quick, short video that demonstrates the excitement that was felt on the Measure B Celebration Tour last week. And do not worry, Measure A2 voters and American Canyon schools, we would never forget you. I was amazed at the progress we're making on the Donaldson Way campus when I visited there a week ago. Tomorrow, I'll actually be at ACMS, where I'll be leading our first Friday NVUSD management meeting from, where I will proceed to have my second visit of the year at ACMS with our new principal, Brian Howard, who's doing a great job. The American Canyon Middle School students seem to be enjoying the facilities upgrades on that beautiful campus, although it's a little tight while students patiently await the upgrade to their field to be complete soon. Next, I'd like to inform the community about another fun highlight called Spaghetti with Dr. Musetti. Another highlight this month was the launch of Spaghetti with Dr. Musetti, a new opportunity for informal dialogue in connection with school site staff. Our first lunch at Alta Heights brought colleagues together in a very relaxed setting to share ideas, ask questions, and reflect on their experiences. I'm excited to continue this new tradition of breaking bread and building community with teams across all 25 schools. Despite being the daughter of an Italian immigrant father, I may be ready for a pasta break by the end of the tour, but then again, it's hard not to love a good plate of spaghetti. So a special thank you to each school for opening up your lunchrooms and making space for these important conversations. The first one was an absolute joy. I also want to just take a moment, this went out in our family newsletter, and I know many of the people in our audience today are here because we are going to hear a fantastic presentation about an initiative that is very dear to my heart, that I'm very excited about, the Stars College Network Initiative here in the district. And if you look at our newsletter, you'll see that there's an incredible opportunity right around the corner, the Stars College Panel Mock Application Workshop. All NVUSD high school students are invited to a special virtual panel featuring admissions officers from Yale, Stanford, Columbia, and the University of Alabama. You'll get a behind-the-scenes look at the college application process, along with expert tips on how to make your application shine. So I'm really encouraging all high school students to intend. These are incredible schools. A meeting directly with the admissions officers from these high caliber schools is an incredible access opportunity, and I hope we can get lots of our high schoolers there. It's Monday, September 16th at 5:00 p.m., so please be sure to register. Opportunities like this support our commitment to career-aligned, real-world learning and help prepare students to realize the graduate portrait that was alluded to through the Student of the Month presentations. We want confident, college-and-career-ready graduates, and so that's one of our efforts in creating them. And then lastly, I just want to remind everybody about our podcast. I'm excited to announce that episode number two of our NVUSD podcast will launch on September 15th. This ongoing series is designed to share stories, showcase voices from across our district, and keep our community informed and engaged. On September 15th, tune in to our second episode, Leading the Way: Voices of NVUSD's First Generation Students in College, featuring 2023 Vintage High School graduate and University of California Davis sophomore, Laura Ortiz Ortiz. I cannot wait for you to hear from Laura. She went from Pueblo Vista to Redwood Middle School, then to VHS. She's an alum. And Latinx first-generation college student who's doing amazing things at UC Davis as a STEM major. Together, all of these efforts reflect NVUSD's commitment to building strong connections, celebrating our progress as an organization, and keeping students at the center of all that we do. I appreciate everyone's support and partnership. I look forward to continuing this momentum throughout the year. Ms. Green, can you quickly cue up that video? No prob, oh, sorry. Let her make her way. Problem solving. And we're going to just quickly show the And we're going to just quickly show the Measure B countdown video. You'll see the eight sites where we celebrated last week. Thank you, anticipating Measure B. All right, with that, we're going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendents, and tonight, Ms. Page is unable to be here, so we have our Director from Human Resources, Ms. Elizabeth Gonzalez, who's going to report out on the work happening in the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Student Board Representative, Fish Leader, and Dr. Masetti. This evening, I'm pleased to share a few updates that support our ongoing efforts to strengthen our systems of wellness and healing. On September 1st, the Human Resources Department released the first edition of our new employee newsletter, The HR Connection, published in both English and Spanish. This newsletter was created in response to feedback from the Well-being-at-Work surveys conducted over the past two years. Its goal is to provide clear, approachable information that enhances the employee experience and helps staff better manage stress in the workplace. Each issue features a column introducing a member of the HR team, so employees know who to contact when they need assistance, as well as a Dear Abby-style Q&amp;A addressing frequently asked HR questions. We understand that processes such as requesting leave, seeking medical accommodations, or reviewing employment policies can sometimes feel overwhelming. Through better communication, we aim to make these processes easier to navigate and give staff confidence in knowing where to turn for help. The newsletter also includes stress management resources, such as breathing exercises, stretching routines, and other practical tips for use during the workday. In addition, it offers Arbinger tools and video links designed to help staff develop an outward mindset and strengthen our positive workplace connections. Each edition provides information on how to access free resources, such as our Employee Assistance Program, our Kaiser webinars, and North Bay School Insurance Programs, encouraging our staff to take advantage of these valuable benefits. So far, 472 employees, that's about a quarter of our workforce, have read the September issue. Looking ahead, several events are planned to promote wellness and safety. Thanks to our Business Services Department, the Benefits Fair will be held next Wednesday afternoon, September 17th, at the district office. This is an excellent opportunity to get all your benefits questions answered in one place, and also to explore available resources during our open enrollment. The following day, September 18th, the Safety and Well-being Committee will meet, led by Gina DeLuca. This group is comprised by NVUSD managers, including myself, union leaders, and North Bay School Insurance Representatives, regularly review accident data, work together to find ways to reduce injury and illness risks for NVUSD employees. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Next, we have Dr. Reddy, who oversees the Instructional Support Services Division.
Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, Student Board Member Fish Leader, and NVUSD community. September is a month of awareness, hope, and opportunity across NVUSD. Through our wellness program, counselors, social workers, and youth outreach coordinators continue to provide vital support for students through counseling, group interventions, and close collaboration with our community partners. Our wellness centers are leading suicide prevention awareness events throughout this month, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, a time to share hope, raise awareness, and connect students and families with life-saving resources. We are also highlighting a new tool, such as CalHope's Bright Life Kids and the Saluna app, which offer free, safe, and confidential support to help young people and families build coping skills and connect with caring professionals. Families are encouraged to learn, the warning signs, create supportive spaces, seek professional help early, and know when to turn in a crisis. Key resources include the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, the Napa County Mental Health Crisis Line, and Carisolus, a free 24/7 mental health care coordination service for students, families, and staff. September is also Attendance Awareness Month. NVUSD has launched a campaign rooted in hope, recovery, and belonging. Our first social media post features students who have overcome challenges with chronic absenteeism and are now moving confidently toward graduation. Their voices are a powerful reminder that showing up matters, and that every student deserves a chance to grow, recover, and succeed. With the support of our communications team, information and data are being shared more frequently through social media and family newsletters with regard to attendance. Attendance letters have also begun going home this month. In addition to truancy notifications, families are receiving chronic absenteeism letters where students have missed 10% or more of the school year. These letters not only have a positive effect on the student, but research shows can also influence siblings in the same household. I'm proud to share that several schools have made significant gains in attendance. Based on our Attendance Works Dated Tool, 13 schools improved their chronic absenteeism rate by 3% or more last year, with New Tech High School showing the largest gain. As a district, overall, we improved. While middle school still remained an area of focus, these gains highlight and the progress that is possible when we work together with our families, our staff, and our students. September also marks the launch of the college application season, and there is much to celebrate. On September 12th, NVUSD will join schools across the nation in celebrating Avid Day. Now in its 45th year, Avid equips students with the skills, confidence, and support to thrive in college careers and beyond. Avid Day is more than a celebration, it's a declaration of our collective commitment to educational equity and opportunities for our students. We're equally proud to announce that 159 NVUSD students have been honored through the College Board National Recognition Program. These awards celebrate students who excel on PSAT or AP exams, maintain strong GPAs, and reflect the excellence of our schools. The recognitions help students stand out to colleges and may even qualify them for scholarships. This year, our students earned distinctions in three categories: First Generation Recognition Award, Rural and Small Town Recognition Award, School Recognition Award. Together, these September milestones, Suicide Prevention Awareness, Attendance Awareness, Avid Day, and the College Board recognitions demonstrate NVUSD's deep commitment to student wellness, belonging, and college and career readiness. They remind us that our work is not only about improving outcomes, but also about inspiring confidence, building resilience, and opening doors for our students. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Reddy. And before we go to Business and Operations, I was corrected that the date for that Stars College Network webinar is actually on October 16th? Did I get it right?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday, October 16th. Thank you so much, Ms. Watkins, I appreciate that. All right, so now, last but not least, we'll go to Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees Business and Operational Services.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the Board and the community. Closing a school due to declining enrollment and fiscal issues is exceptionally hard on the community. In June of 2022, Harvest Middle School was closed due to declining enrollment. While the district has done a great deal to mitigate the impacts of the closure, the underutilized school has been a constant reminder of these impacts. On tonight's agenda, the Board will consider a purchase agreement between the district and the City of Napa for the former Harvest Middle School. I'm very excited about this opportunity to close the chapter on middle school redesign and the closure of Harvest. More importantly, I'm excited about the opportunity to partner with the City of Napa to help preserve this incredible community asset. The district held a number of community engagement events where preservation of community assets was a repeating theme. Sale of the property to the city will allow for these assets to continue to be available and for the city to improve them. I'm also very excited about the opportunity to put the proceeds from the sale to work on our much-needed facilities improvements. These funds will allow us to do an even better job on the commitments we made to the community under our Bond Measure Program. I'd also like to thank Liz Habkirk, the Assistant City Manager from the City of Napa. Without your partnership, we wouldn't have gotten where we are. Thank you very much for your hard work and commitment, and she is in the audience over there.
The enrollment team had a smooth launch of the school year. This was the final year of the Universal TK Expansion, and we successfully opened nine new TK classrooms in NVUSD. TK enrollment in NVUSD has increased by 260% since TK Expansion began in 2021. Now, all students who turned four by September 1st are eligible to attend NVUSD. The Food Services Team has had a strong start to the school year with a focus on staff training and the introduction of new menu items. Students already enjoying items such as orange chicken with brown rice, falafel salads, turkey and bacon sandwiches with chipotle mayo. In recognition of September as Food Safety Awareness Month, the team is strengthening systems to ensure safe, high-quality meal service. To further support this work, 25 staff will take the Safe Serve Manager Certification exam on October 10th during our PD Day, with another 25 scheduled for the March PD Day. Earning this certificate will reinforce staff knowledge and skills, ensuring the safe and well-being of students and staff we serve. Our Maintenance and Ground Team have hit the ground running, ensuring school sites are ready for students and staff for the first day of school. Their dedication ensured a smooth start to the school year. In addition to our team's continued work on fields project, ensuring our fields are the best possible condition for our students, our team completed over 1,200 work orders over the summer. Operations or custodial and warehouse teams have truly hit the ground running since the start of the school year. Thanks to their dedication and long hours of preparation, classrooms were clean, organized, and ready to welcome students and staff on day one. The data team worked hard over the summer and into the first several weeks of the school year to ensure that areas are student schedules, data confirmation, and access to online learning tools were available to students and teachers. That work has since settled, and the team is now supporting a number of student assessments in partnership with the Instructional Services Program. The technology team has had a busy start to the school year, helping teachers, staff, and students with all things tech, and ensuring this important time went off without too many issues. In the process, our team closed 2,383 tickets. The Transportation Department continues to work to provide support for our overflow students, and we're working to identify new best-of for the Harvest area. This concludes my report.
Great, and I have one more correction on my Stars College Network Mock Application Exhibition. I think I said-- no problem. It's Tuesday, September 16th, not Tuesday, October 16th. So for the record, 5:00 PM, please register. The link's in the family newsletter. All right, with that, President Reiser, that concludes the Executive Staff Reports for the evening.
Wonderful, thank you. So now we have H4 Facilities and Bond Program update.
All right, next slide, please. All right, right now, we are in the process of wrapping up summer and getting ready for next summer. So just as a reminder, we completed campus modernization at Browns Valley, Canyon Oaks, McPherson, Shear, Phillips, Pueblo Vista, Bishe, West Park, Silverado. We're also working on American Canyon Middle School. We are working on punch item list right now and doing quality control walks as a follow-up to the work, so when work is done, there's always follow-up works where the work didn't meet our standards. As a matter of fact, I went on a paint walk today to identify areas of touch-up. We're also finishing up some of the gutters and downspouts, so we're probably sitting at about, oh, 90% of the gutters and downspouts, and so we'll be doing that work on the weekend. Donaldson Way Campus is very well underway. The new multipurpose room looks really, really nice. American Canyon Track and Field, again, construction wrapping up by the end of fall. Next slide. So we are also working on marquee installation, and as you know, we took this to the Board last year, but it kind of snuck up on me, this first batch, and so they arrived a little bit sooner than anticipated. You can see-- you want to play the video again, Nikki? Let's see. I'll stop talking this time, so you can see it. Maybe we can see the walls run by. There you go. They're pretty slick. We're really excited about it, and so the first four are going to go in the next couple of weeks. These are the ones that did not have infrastructure work to go in, so it's just a replacement into the existing spot. Some of the other ones will take a little bit longer, but again, we're very excited about this. Next slide. So for 2026, again, we're planning for campus modernization at Napa High and Vintage, along with Redwood, Stonebury, and Valley Oak. Some of the other projects that we have going on, we're working on the Silverado Quad and parking lot improvements. We're working on our playgrounds. At UNIDOS, we're also looking at potential expansion of the campus, so we continue to work on that, and we are paving the world. And so we just received bids on paving at four school sites. We hope to get that work done pretty quick here with some contracts coming to the Board. And that's it, thank you. Unless there's questions?
Thank you for that excellent, celebration-worthy update, Mr. Manguala. Okay, so we have amended the agenda, which brings us now to Item J3A under Instructional Services, the Stars College Network Summer Program Presentation.
Good evening, President Reiser, Trustees, Assistant Representative Fish Leader, Dr. Masetti. I'm always excited to be in front of you, but I'm always excited to also talk about the Stars College Network and the opportunity that it represents for our students. As we move to the next slide. It is a good example of what an enthusiastic superintendent, a supportive board can do to the adult system and also the district system when we focus on the graduate portrait, and specifically the mission. I know that President Reiser read it earlier. I'd like to reference it again. "Our mission is to prepare each student for a successful future by delivering rigorous and relevant learning experiences that develop their literacy, encourage ready skills, cultivate their interests, and build resilience, compassion, and competence." And with the Stars program, we're going to be highlighting the Summer Fly-In Program, which highlight a lot of the components of that mission. Next slide. We also ground our work in our strategic plan, and so Strategy 2 focuses on sustaining, aligning, and expanding our partnerships with local community colleges, four-year universities, and local industries to provide all students with TK-12 with authentic and real-world learning experiences. The Stars relationship and partnership highlights the four-year universities, and when we say four-year universities, we also want to highlight some of the most prestigious universities in the country. And next slide, as we see not only to Strategy 2, but a connection to our annual Board Priorities Number 2, Strengthening College and Career Readiness. And so Kelly Watkins, who is our counselor on special assignment, is going to elaborate a little bit on this partnership and what it meant for some of our students in the summer. She has a cavalcade of Stars in person, also via Zoom, to discuss, celebrate, and also hear from Kelly.
Oh, leave it in its current position. Okay, I didn't read that. So we have 16 students tonight. Most, we have a lot of them are here tonight, and their parents, their families, brothers that even came. So we are just so excited to be in front of you. I'm so grateful that the Board approved this in February. We had a really quick turnaround, thanks to the amazing counselors. Tricia from ACHS is here. I was one of those counselors as well. We had a huge mission in front of us, which was to launch Stars basically within two months, and send these kids out onto these opportunities, and just do everything that we could to make our mark, and we did. So the amazing work by the NVUSD counselors, by May, we had 50 students in NVUSD applying to these Stars fly-in programs, to Vanderbilt and to UChicago. Of the 50 that applied, 22 were accepted, and 16 brave 9th through 11th graders got on a plane, some for the first time, and stayed between five days to a week at these campuses, took classes from professors. I'll let them elaborate in a second, but I am extremely proud of the students that took the initiative to apply. Some of them, it was their first kind of big-time application, and then also to say yes to an incredible opportunity. So next slide, please. I'm going to invite Adar and Victoria to come up here. Yeah, you guys can come on up. Can we move to the next slide? Okay. You can read some of the student reflections. "The trip has changed my view of college applications, from a stressful deadline into a manageable step-by-step process. I now feel more..." I now feel more confident in my ability to present myself authentically and effectively when the time comes." Beau wrote that in his reflection, and he's sitting right here. Someone, Jasmine from NHS, said, "I would recommend this program to any other student because I feel like it was an incredible experience. The program allowed me to meet new people from different places and get a real on-campus experience." I'm going to let, instead of reading from this, I'm going to let Adar and Victoria, two vintage high school seniors, tell a little bit about their experience. Adar went to the Vanderbilt Future Scholars Academy, and Victoria went to the Emerging Leaders UChicago program. So, Rochambeau, who wants to...
Good evening. My name's Victoria, and I attended the University of Chicago's Emerging Leader Program. I absolutely loved my time there, even though I was generally nervous to go out of state and fly for the first time by myself. I really enjoyed exploring the city, meeting new people, and being in that college environment. So there was two things that I learned about myself. One of them is that I do really well in being independent, and I don't want to offend my parents, but what I mean is being responsible for myself while in that regular routine of college. The second thing was that it was way easier to talk to people when I know absolutely nothing about them. It's different to not knowing someone in your high school. Everyone was curious about others because we were all from different cities, different states, as well as different programs. I loved connecting with them because they were all really friendly. One thing that stretched me outside of my comfort zone was how different the classes were structured. The classes at UChicago were really discussion-based compared to a lecture-based high school class. I really had to adjust to that because I'm used to being told what to do in class. So I feel like overall, my experience at UChicago made me sure of my decision in applying to college. During my time there, I felt like, I really felt like I was in the right environment. I would recommend to students to just take a chance and apply to a summer program because they'll learn early if they would like to go to college or not, and it's just a great time to travel to other states.
Great job, Victoria.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Adar, and this summer, I was able to attend the Vanderbilt Rising Stars Program. And in this program, I took a class based on the nature of time, and it was a very physics-based class. And a very important thing about taking this class is I'm now able to use some of the concepts I learned in my AP Physics class at high school, which has been very helpful to me and has gave me a little boost ahead of some of the other students. And a major benefit from attending this summer program is being able to stay in the dorms. As I hadn't really been away from my parents and living alone for a majority of my life, I've been kind of a stay-at-home person, and going across the country over to Nashville, Vanderbilt, it really kind of opened my mind to maybe applying to some of the schools on that side of this country, as I didn't really plan on doing that originally, since I didn't think I could survive out there. And being able to live in the dorms and make new friends and just live the college experience earlier than most people would have a chance at, really opened my mind to my future and maybe applying to some higher schools than I would have originally applied to. And overall, this experience has impacted my life in multiple ways. Firstly, with obviously the AP class, as I mentioned earlier, and also with just my viewpoint on my future, which I really appreciate the opportunity for.
Great job, Adar. I wish I could have all the students say a little bit, but we can share their reflections with you. They filled out a reflection form, so we can share that with you later. Lucas and Yaleen, they are zooming in from UChicago. It's much later their time right now. It's probably 10:30. I hope they're online, Ashley, maybe? As they're getting connected to Zoom in, let me just say a few words. Lucas and Yaleen have been working with a lot of the students in the room, one-on-one college advising for all students. Oh, there they are! Yay!
Go Maroons!
Go Maroons! We will let you, Lucas and Yaleen, take it away, just talk about our students, all the amazing work you're doing with them with their college advising program.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, NVUSD, Dr. Masetti, and everyone else for having us attend tonight. Yeah, even though it's a little bit late here, we're still really excited to call in, and it was so awesome getting to see the Students of the Month. Yaleen and I were both like, "Oh, my gosh, that's our student. That's our student over there. That's our student." So that was...
I want the acceptance package with a scholarship now. No pressure.
Thanks for the no pressure. We got to spend time with students this summer at UChicago. Yaleen and I weren't the ones running the program. It was really fun to get to see the students, getting to interact with students from across the country. It was like, there were kids from Texas, there were kids from New York, there were kids from Missouri, there were kids from, you know, almost every state I could think of represented in the Emerging Leader Program. And so getting to see students from Napa and the students that we're working with through the advising program, getting to interact with them was really awesome. I know Yaleen's going to talk a little bit more about what she's heard from the students that she's worked with about the summer program, and I just wanted to provide some brief updates on how things are going with the advising program. So we started our one-on-one advising back at the end of May, and since then, we've met with 45 students from NVUSD, a total of 117 times. Some of those students, one time, some of the students, two times, some students over 10 times. And we've covered a variety of different college access subjects, whether it's just getting to know students and working on their college list, or working on writing their PIQ statements, or their personal essays, or in some cases, reaching out to colleges on behalf of students and helping them navigate the specific application process and getting the resources they need. I know a lot of the students are excited about many of the Star schools, and many of the students are still really excited about all the great options that are in California. And we're hoping to continue growing the program and working with more students from NVUSD.
Yeah. So just adding a little bit to what Lucas mentioned, it's been great working with your students so far. They're also well-rounded, high-achieving students, so it's been great meeting with them and just learning so much about them and helping them with their college journey. Victoria, who's actually a student that spoke about her experience at the ERL program at UChicago, is actually there. She's been a student that I've been advising for the past couple of weeks, so just seeing her there now at the board meeting and then hearing about her experience at UChicago and now advising her, it's kind of like, wow, Star is being implemented in so many ways at NVUSD, and it's amazing to see students being, taking advantage of all of these opportunities. So yeah, I just want to ensure, just reiterating, that all of the Stars fly-in programs, they're all accessible for all students throughout NVUSD, as long as you're applying. Apparently, right now, there's a senior application for the Case Western Reserve University in Columbus, Ohio, which closes on September 15th. And then there's more fly-in opportunities opening up for other grades in January. So definitely, students take advantage of these Stars fly-in programs. As students already mentioned in the reflections, it's free, it's a great opportunity for students to live in the dorms, tour a different place, meet new friends, other students, learn about different backgrounds, attend college classes. Overall, it's a great experience. And then aside from, you know, the obvious great opportunity to do a fly-in, Star is constantly having different virtual programs, which Dr. Masetti mentioned a little bit earlier. So yeah, definitely take advantage of all the Stars opportunities because we're here to help support in any way that we can. So yeah, don't be afraid to reach out. We're always here, no matter what time it is, and yeah, we're always just here.
So I'm going to have the students come up. I'm going to individually call you, parents. You can take photos. So first, and why don't you guys, if it's okay, just in a little horseshoe, line up as I call your name. Madison Ju from ACHS. Zachary Zhang. I don't think Paxton Fisher is here, but I'm just going to announce her names anyways. Natalia Castillo. Abigail Levant here, come on up. Alina Flores Barajas. Jasmine Ramos. Enrique Zuniga Garnica. Everett Kincaid. Mr. Beau Feliz, come on up here. Victoria Hernandez Tamaio. Valerie Chikadi. Lena Gonzalez. Eden Taub. And last but not least, Adar. So one thing I want to say before we take the photo with Dr. Masetti, this is for the board to hear as well and to the students, so I'm glad I'm saying it to you. I'm just so grateful that we're a part of this. I'm grateful for Dr. Masetti just pioneering this because really, it's giving these students such incredible opportunities and many more students to come. Just so you guys know, October 1st, we are hosting with UChicago a very special evening here at the district office for ninth through 12th grade families to get to know more about UChicago, their application process with Berenice Campos. We also are hosting on October 16th, NVUSD and Stars is having a college access symposium. Berkeley, UC Irvine, Auburn, Vanderbilt, UChicago, Caltech, I could keep going. Tons of amazing universities are going to be here, and they've crafted workshops just for students and parents, so please take advantage of that. Also, I know Yaleen mentioned another fly-in program. We had 11 students and counting apply to that Case Western fly-in program. So the buzz is out there. I'm so excited, and this is just the start of what's to come. So can we give a round of applause to these amazing students? And you guys can come closer, and we'll take a photo.
I just, actually, I'm going to scoot that way, actually, towards Dr. Masetti. There we go. One, two. One more.
Before you all leave, and especially the parents, I just want to thank the parents who were supportive of their students, young people taking advantage of this opportunity. It's just an absolute honor and a privilege for us as a school district to cultivate a partnership like this that brings such access and opportunity to our high-achieving high school students who are so motivated and so ready for their future. And I know that they need parent support to do it, and so many of you are hanging out here with us at close to 9 o'clock, and that just speaks to the fact that they're going to be incredibly successful with your support. So thank you for letting them take that risk and doing, just, you know, taking a first amazing step that is really going to get them to stretch and grow. So we're really, really grateful for your support and partnership as well. I don't know if any of the board members want to say anything before they go.
So I actually do, and I'm going to have to say, Dr. Masetti, this is my only complaint. Now, my son now wants to go to Vanderbilt because that's where he went, and I'm sure a lot of the parents, your students, probably are feeling like maybe they want to go to University of Chicago or Vanderbilt. So, you know, of course, that's not really a complaint, of course, when we realize our children are ready and they have this opportunity to really discover that they are ready. So thank you, Dr. Masetti, for setting up and making this connection, and I think we're all very grateful for this.
Thank you. And just a recognition to the staff that's implementing all this. You know, thank you, of course, to the Maroon UChicago staff, Dr. Ready, leading this out of her division, our Director of College and Career Readiness, Mario Landeros, and of course, our new Lead Counselor on Special Assignment, Ms. Kelly Watkins, all of these folks. I came back with all of this possibility, and we said we had to hit the ground running, and they have made this happen with very, very little time. So it just speaks to the quality of the leadership and the staff that we have here in NVUSD. They're so committed to making sure our kids have access to opportunities like these. So thank you so much to the staff, too, for all of their hard work.
Okay, well, that was, it's going to be hard to top that moment with the rest of the meeting, but we do need to move on to I, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of an item is required, requested, I'm sorry, by a board member.
I will move to approve.
Second.
First, from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Fish Leader.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. J, Presentations and Discussion Items. J1, General Services. J1A, Introduction to California School Board Association's Recommended Policy Updates, June 2025.
These were reviewed by the Policy Committee. These are just the quarterly updates from CSBA. So they are coming tonight for introduction, and they'll be coming to the subsequent meeting for action.
Thank you. And J1B, Introduction to California School Board Association's Recommended Special Policy Updates of August 2025.
Yeah, so this came after the quarterly June 1, due to some of the federal mandates and changes in response to the Mahmood versus Taylor case, and this is the recommendation from CSBA in order to make sure that the district is compliant. Again, introduction, went to Policy Committee, and will be coming forward for action at this next meeting.
Okay, thank you. J2, Business Services. J2A, 2024-25 Unaudited Actuals Presentation. Mr. Mugwala.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. Tonight, I will be speaking about our unaudited actuals. Next slide, please. Economic Changes Since January. So the economy is anticipated to grow at a much slower rate. Tariffs are definitely weighing on the economy. Real gross domestic product has been downgraded for '25-'26. Economic growth has gone down by 0.3%. Unemployment rate is definitely higher. So what we're seeing, if I were to just kind of summarize it, we're seeing the tale of two economies going on right now, especially with the impact of AI. So the unemployment rate is up, inflation is up, but the stock market is really, really high. A lot of it is driven by AI, and there's lots of big expenditures going on in the economy. Big tech has lots of money. They're deciding where to invest the money due to anticipation of AI getting stronger and stronger, which leads to layoffs, which we're kind of seeing already in the economy. Next slide. And so there definitely are federal impacts on the overall economy. The tariffs have caused a great deal of uncertainty in the economy. The flip-flopping of tariffs have caused large stock market sell-offs, followed by rebounds. Tariffs are on their way to the Supreme Court. You can say they're in the Supreme Court right now. So we'll see what will happen with it. If I were to anticipate, I'd anticipate probably nothing will happen. The stock market is not anticipating a big change. Like I said earlier, the stock market's recovered from some of the downswings, but the real estate market is really struggling, and so this will be a big challenge for the Federal Reserve, trying to determine if and when there were lower interest rates. So there is an anticipated lowering of interest rate at this upcoming meeting of 0.25. upcoming meeting of 0.25, likely another one after that. The bond market is basically pricing that in. You've seen mortgage rates start to come down, which will definitely help the housing market. Next slide. So again, this is NASDAQ. This is from yesterday. I think it's actually higher today. And so yesterday was a spectacular, I'd just say spectacular day, just really just kind of highlighting the differences between what's going on in the regular economy around us and the most wealthy people in the world. And so yesterday was a record day. Larry Ellison's, his net worth went up by, I think, $300 billion. So in one day. So just kind of, I just can only describe it as spectacular, kind of what's going on in the economy, whether the stock market stays like this. It's really hard to say. You know, when it goes up like this, it always eventually comes down. But what does that mean for education? What it means for education is that, you know, our revenues that we receive, we receive the vast majority of it based on high-income earners who get their money from the stock market. So when the stock market goes up like this, revenues in K-12 generally go up. The reports that I've seen so far indicate that we're definitely tracking revenues where they're supposed to be. The ones coming in the next couple of months, I would imagine, would even be higher. Next slide. This is the S&amp;P, similar to NASDAQ. Next slide. So in California, the unemployment rate, again, it is ticking up. We definitely notice that here in the school district. So when we post positions, we definitely have a lot more applicants than we typically do. So we have a really good pool to pull from. Next slide. This slide depicts forecast, general fund cash receipts at the state level versus actual. So red is forecast, actual is blue. So it's pretty much been spot-on. June, it looks like it was a little bit higher. Again, I would anticipate that it'll come up higher over the next couple of months, just based on the stock market's return. Next slide. So this represents our three-year budget that we adopted at budget adoption. So you can see as a district, even with declining enrollment, we do anticipate that our revenues will continue to go up slightly. So from about $222 million to $232 million over the next couple of years. We do have a balanced budget for the year. We do anticipate a deficit in year two and year three, but we'll continue with our pattern to try and reduce costs and balance the budget every year going forward to the greatest extent possible. Next slide. This slide depicts where we're at at un-audited actuals. And so you can see our revenues and expenses are essentially balanced. We meet the reserve requirement for the district and the 3%. So our board policy is 10%. Our, the reserve that we're required to meet is 3%. So we did meet that. Next slide. And so I'll just remind the board and the public, what are the benefits of having healthy reserves? Reserves give you time to make necessary decisions to address deficit spending due to declining enrollment, the reduction in employee and facilities costs. And so what we want to do whenever we make reductions, we want to do it in a careful manner. And so by having reserves, we don't have to react. We can actually plan. So super important to have adequate reserves. They also have, you have the ability to give one-time compensation increases and to remain fiscally solvent when things bad are kind of going around you. So again, super important point. Next slide. And then again, the reality reserves, reserves are one-time money. Once you spend them, they're gone. Declining enrollment will continue to pollute reserves over time. Next slide. And so our next steps, we did run the NVA compensation formula, which resulted in a 3% ongoing salary increase. So you'll see a number of board items coming up over the next series of board meetings to address this. And a 2% off-schedule increase with the anticipated payday would be end of October, end of November, and we'll be bringing our AB 1200 to the September 25th board meeting. Next slide. And I think that's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mongualla. Questions or discussion from the board?
Yeah, I just think where we were something like seven years ago and where we are now. And this is a good place to be and I think we should, you know, continue down this path. There has been some commentary at times that, what do you need those reserves for? Well, I think this explains it. And, you know, all we need are, I just, I just think of emergencies that pop up. It's nice to be able to give, to give a bonus unit to employees once in a while. And it's, we need to remember that it should be spent on one-time things and not recurring because that's what has gotten some school districts near us in trouble. And I'm not saying this to gloat, it's just a fact. And we suffered to get here. We didn't enjoy, we didn't enjoy closing schools at all. It's not something that anybody wants to do. But I think we're in good financial shape. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Other comments from the board? Yeah, Mr. Mongualla, just second what Trustee Water said, you know, going from the brink of fiscal insolvency eight years ago to, you know, boasting solid reserves that allow us to be, you know, stable in what is clearly a volatile and uncertain time economically and with policy shifts at the federal level, you know, facing court challenges that leave us with a lot of question marks and a lot of variables at play. We have suffered. We have done hard, hard things to get here. And I'm very grateful and I think I, on behalf of the board, I'll thank you for your steady and strategic and mindful leadership in this department to get us to this place where we can continue to give salary raises and bonuses to our hard-working staff while maintaining a healthy reserve that keeps us protected from the uncertainties that a lot of districts are really suffering right now and therefore their students are suffering. So on behalf of the board, I thank you for getting us here.
Thank you.
I just, before we close, I know that our Executive Director Jenna Burrows is online and our Director Claudia Alcantad-Mendoza. And I just want to take the two, I want to thank the two of them. I know how much work goes into closing the books. I know what a stressful time it is to be able to produce the un-audited actuals report. So I just want to thank them and all of their, you know, their technical teams that support that process. It's a busy time in the summer for them while they're doing all that work. So I just want to recognize them. So thank you so much, Jenna and Claudia.
Yes, they do all the magic in the background, for sure.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, this brings us to K action items. K1, General Services. K1A is a resolution 25-01, amended call to climate restoration action.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. We do have a public comment. Jim Wilson, would you like to share your comment?
Is it on? I think it needs to be. Can you turn it on?
Yeah, you need to do the button on the bottom.
Better. Thank you all. I'm Jim Wilson, City of Napa, grandfather and a member of Napa Climate Now and advisor to the student group Napa Schools for Climate Action. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this item tonight. I'm glad that you did what you did. You're careful in doing so and you retain accountability, I think, in the systems that you already put to practice. And so I think it's a good idea. I have a concern about an annual report, but if you look at the staff report, you can see that the idea is to have your advisory committee, your finance, technology, and facilities advisory committee make more frequent updates. And I think that's a great idea. This is the resolution that you passed in 2024. It's in pamphlet format. We use these as teaching resources in the schools. The students use them when they go into the cities, the county, the RCD, and most recently, Tementus, asking for these folks in the community to endorse this resolution and the work that they're doing with Congress member Mike Thompson. He reintroduced his climate restoration resolution in July in the 119th Congress. One concern I have is that we continue to support the student outreach in the community. These guys are really, really serious about putting together a new curriculum. This climate change curriculum includes this sort of thing, which is the climate restoration science, technology, and the kinds of policies we need to get back to pre-industrial CO2 concentrations. And so we'd like to see that succeed. The other thing that the students are doing in accordance with this resolution is they're going out into the communities. St. Elina High School now is putting together a school district resolution along these lines. Cal Estoga is. There are schools throughout the state. There's one school district in Yorba-Linda, working with your students in Napa Valley Unified School District, which has already drafted a resolution similar to this one, which points to Thompson's climate restoration resolution. So you can be very happy about the service that your students are providing on behalf of this community and all of the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call vote for this resolution, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And I was reminded by Vice President Chu that I neglected to ask for online public comment related to this item. Ms. Green, was there online public comment for this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, Vice President Chu. Takes a village to get through the agenda correctly. K2, Business Services. We have K2A, Resolution 26-02, adopting the 2025-26 GAN limit. This as a resolution also requires a roll call vote, but...
I'll move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Is there any public comment online for this item, Ms. Green?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. So we can proceed with the roll call vote.
Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. K2C, I'm sorry, K2B, Resolution 2603, declaring property as exempt surplus land.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call vote for this resolution?
Yes, Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Item K2C, Resolution 2604, approving and authorizing superintendent to execute purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions with the City of Napa.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, may we have another roll call vote for this resolution?
Yes, Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And I'll take a moment to just thank the City of Napa for their collaboration in moving forward with this really exciting, once-in-a-generation opportunity. Okay, item K2D, the un-audited actual report for 2024-25.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. K3, Facility Improvement. K3A, the lease-leaseback Agreement with FRC Inc.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K3B, Agreement with HKIT Architects.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K3C, Agreement with FIT Environmental for Stonebridge School.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K3D, Agreement with FIT Environmental for Redwood Middle School.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K3E, Agreement with FIT Environmental for Napa High.
Move to approve. Second.
First from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K3F, Agreement with FIT Environmental for Vintage High.
Move to approve. Second.
First from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K3G, Agreement with FIT Environmental for Valley Oak.
Move to approve. Second.
First from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K4, Human Resources. K4A, Local Assignment Options.
Move to approve. Second.
First from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K5, Instructional Services. K5A, Supplementary Online Instructional Program Adoption for Elementary and Middle Schools.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K5B, Data Privacy Agreement and Subscription with Teachers First LLC.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K5C, Agreement with Napa Valley Education Foundation.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K5D, Agreement with Coloma Outdoor Discovery School for Vishi.
Move to approve. Second.
First from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K5E, Ratification of Agreement with Speech Plus Related Services LLC.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. K5F, Ratification of Disclosure and Data Agreement with San Joaquin County Office of Education.
Move to approve. Second.
First from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader? Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K5G, ratification of renewal contract with Spectrum Center Inc.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Green, is there public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Fish Leader?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. L brings us to informational items. L1, general services. L1A, the Curriculum and Student Support Committee has not met, so there are no minutes attached. L1B, Facilities and Technology Committee also has not met?
Has not met.
So, there are no minutes attached. L1C, the Finance Committee, we just met yesterday, so the minutes will be attached for the next meeting. L1D, the Policy Committee.
Minutes should be attached, right?
Yeah, they're attached.
Okay, there are minutes attached for that one. Are there, is there any public comment for that item, Ms. Green?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. L1E, report and update on NVUSD versus California State Board of Education litigation matter. The California Supreme Court denies the petition and the case has been settled.
Thank you, President Riser. I'd like to invite the district's legal counsel, Ms. Mary Hernandez, who will be informing the board and the public with an update on this informational item.
Good evening, everyone. I assume you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. At the end of June this year, we learned that the Napa Valley Unified School District's victory in its litigation against the State Board of Education was finally over. The California Supreme Court denied the Napa Foundation for Options and Education's fourth appeal of the district's 2021 denial of the Maya Commas Charter middle school petition. As you may recall, NAPAFO appealed to the county after the 2021 decision, then to the State Board, and then when the Sacramento Superior Court issued a very strong 26-page ruling supporting NVUSD, it appealed that decision. And then when the Third Circuit Court of Appeal issued an even stronger 32-page ruling supporting the Napa Valley Unified School District, it appealed that one as well. This summer, the Supreme Court basically said no more reviews. The case is closed. The Third Circuit Court of Appeal decision stands. So, as I mentioned in the report that you have all received, multiple courts have found this board's decision in 2021 to deny the original Maya Commas Charter middle school petition to be legally appropriate. The appellate court found that the State Board abused its discretion by not supporting NVUSD's local decision and specifically found that the State Board's decision was arbitrary, capricious, and entirely lacking in evidentiary support. This is a victory not only for the Napa Valley Unified School District, but for local control and decision-making. The Third Circuit Court of Appeals ruling is now precedent that sets the standard for local control, and it can be cited by school districts throughout California, many of whom, I understand, have thanked this board and its superintendent, Dr. Musetti, for your leadership and commitment. The court's ruling made clear the limited standard of review under the law that requires the State Board of Education to give great deference to local school board decisions. Now that the case is over, the California School Boards Association, CSBA, which represents virtually all of the school and county boards of education throughout California, filed a motion in August to recover more than a quarter million dollars that it spent in its own parallel lawsuit backing the district in this litigation. CSBA became involved because it believed our case to be of great statewide public interest and importance to its over 1,000 school and county boards of education in California to ensure that the State Board appropriately follows the Charter Schools Act. CSBA is requesting the court to require NAPAFO, which oversees the Maya Commas Charter middle school and the State Board, to pay the legal expenses CSBA incurred. A hearing on CSBA's request is scheduled for the first week of November. Again, now that the California Supreme Court has shut the door on any further review or appeals, the State Board of Education is required to comply with the Sacramento Court's original order issued a little over two years ago in July 2023. That order directed the court to set aside and vacate its September 2022 decision regarding the appeal by NAPAFO of the denials by NVUSD and by the county board of education regarding their petition to establish the first Maya Commas Charter middle school. The court further directed the State Board to submit a filing detailing what it had done to comply with that order, and that filing was due within 30 days of the order, but the clock didn't start running because NAPAFO began its marathon of appeals to stop the order from going into effect so that it could open. Two years later, now that it has run out of appeals, the clock began running again, and the State Board of Education was again required to submit a filing detailing what it had done or planned to do to comply with the Superior Court's order. We have been monitoring the State Board's meeting agendas and became concerned that the State Board had not yet complied with the order, so we sent a communication to the legal counsel representing the State Board of Education about this. A copy of that letter was made available online, I understand it, with tonight's meeting agenda for this information item, so you all have a copy of that letter. I am pleased to report this update to you, that the attorney representing the State Board of Education responded this afternoon and let us know that, as we requested, the State Board was notified during its meetings this week that a writ return needs to be filed with the court. He further confirmed that the State Board will submit the required filing with the court by the date we requested in just under two weeks, and we will continue to monitor the State Board's compliance with the court order. And that does it for my update. If you have any questions?
No questions, but I just want to thank you, Ms. Hernandez, for that really clear summary of the long and winding road that we have traveled. Obviously, on behalf of the board, I'll say that we're very pleased with this outcome. We believe it is the right and just outcome, and we look forward to the next update regarding the State Board's compliance. Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night. Okay, L2, business services. L2A, the enrollment report. Trustee Chu had a comment she'd like to share.
Yeah, I actually have a couple of observations I thought the public would be interested in knowing. First one is that American Canyon High School has now become the largest high school in our district, which is no surprise, I think, given the enrollment trends in the last few years. And of course, American Canyon continues to have the three largest, well, three out of the four largest elementary schools in NVUSD, and of course, have always had the largest American Canyon middle school in the district. But despite all that, what I did notice was that the King's projection was actually, I calculated, we are actually 73 students below our projection, and it's at all three levels. So, I think what King's projection in the past in estimating the number of student generation probably needs to be adjusted, given that I think that the trends in American Canyon starting, what I'm seeing is starting to, you know, be a little lower. I don't think it's, the new homes are generating as many. I think a lot of families are, you know, they're starting to be empty nesters and having their kids graduate. So, I just wanted to point that out as an interesting trend for American Canyon. And I know there's one more factor in there that I don't think we've quite discussed, which is the Vallejo School District also restricting the number of students who they are allowing and releasing to transfer to other districts. It isn't just NVUSD, it's also Benicia School Districts. So, you know, I am concerned about that when it comes to how many students we do have. It will impact us at some point. I don't know when that might occur, but I just thought we should, you know, think about these things as we're thinking about, you know, how conservative we should be, especially as we see the unaudited actuals today, and how we actually definitely need to plan for those uncertainties. So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Trustee Chu. We are definitely watching that very closely and as a part of our normal annual update to our enrollment projections. We work with our demographer to update trends and things where we see things that are different. That work generally starts the first week in October is when we, is when we look at our cow pads number, and, and as those numbers kind of firm up later in the month, we'll definitely make decisions about directions and what we'll do for, for projections. There are a number of factors in terms of what's happening enrollment. You did mention a couple of them, but also we're seeing just overall trend where the prior two years, we were coming in above projection. This is the first year in some time we're actually sitting below projection.
Thank you for that exchange. L2B, the warrant register for accounts payable. Oh, I should ask, is there any public comment on the enrollment report online, Ms. Green?
There is no public comment on the enrollment report.
Thank you. L2B, the warrant register for accounts payable checks issued by NVUSD. Is there any public comment for that item?
There is no public comment.
Thank you. Any discussion from trustees? Okay. And L3, human resources. L3A, the quarterly report on Williams Uniform Complaints for the period ending July 31, 2025. Do we have any public comment online for that item, Ms. Green?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. So, that brings us to M. Additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent? Seeing none, we'll go to Ann. Future agenda items?
Something. I was at a retirement party for one of the boards of Mentis, and these, the board members started telling me all the amazing things that Mentis does in NVUSD, and I did not know